Well, then he goofed up.
Yeah.
I just forwarded it out.
Not the reason you want to be there, but it was fun to get everybody together.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody.
We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
My lead is to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
All right, start with the approval of the agenda. Ryan, anything?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Paul?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to have a quick discussion about I and I again.
Okay.
Continuing from last week.
Put that on their engineers' report, J two. Dan, anything?
I have nothing.
Tim, anything else?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, all right. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Questions, comments for administration on the consent agenda? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, visitors of council, Tony Paulson.
Tony Paulson, 603 Second Street, northwest Casson, Minnesota. Got some concern about you, the city council, I do believe approved golf carts, ATVs, UTVs. I'm not sure what all was approved by the city council. But I just want to kind of show a little bit of a demonstration of, because the police, it's hard for, I'm guessing it's hard for them to police, because I did talk to him and he said that it's hard for them just to get licensing, to make sure that they get licensed. This is private property right here, private parking lot, and since the construction is going on, this has turned into a highway for us, which is a legality problem. Um, not only, not just a legality problem, but, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Liability, liability issue. So we get them, and from my understanding, they're not supposed to be on 34 or Manaville Avenue. Is that correct?
Yeah, only see streets is what I was told.
Yeah, they can cross it. They're not supposed to be on it.
Yeah, so, um, they help themselves to wherever they want to go, whenever they want to go, and it gets sickening. I don't even know if ATVs are allowed. ATVs are allowed?
In town, yeah. They have license.
UTVs are, but ATVs aren't as well?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. Golf carts, and they're not afraid of the construction zone either. They could care less. And let's be honest, the, the common sense of those here is not, they don't care about the construction zone. They just go in and out. They don't care. That's why I brought this. The dangers that go along with this, they, they don't care. We've had to stop a few people and say, turn around, go back the other way. I mean, here literally, a train of them. At what point do you say enough is enough? I mean, I don't want to take the liability as soon as they get back into my vehicle, and then who's responsible? We had, we had a sign up until a construction company took it up, took it out. Private property, clients and employees only, no golf carts allowed, but these guys now, they're kind of ruining the worst of Casson, I mean, the whole city itself.
You know who these people are?
No, there's...
They haven't done it when you're there?
No, no, that's just, and I talked to the, uh, who's the captain of the police?
Chief Hanson.
Josh. I think I talked, I think it was Josh I talked to, and he says right now they're struggling just to even get people to license them, let alone catch them driving around. So that, that's where the struggle is.
I think that's the problem with enforcement of any of the ordinances, is it's, people run stop signs every day too, and unless you're, unless the police are right there to catch them.
Right.
I mean, people, I had somebody drive a golf cart through my yard two nights ago.
So, what do we do about this issue? Is this something that we can say, you know, you guys had your chance, you guys, the city council approved it, do we say, you know what, you guys abused it, you're not going to deal with it anymore?
You mean overall?
Yeah.
Can I add something?
Yes. What's your name, sir?
What's the possibility you can amend whatever statutes you have in place to, um, number one, you'll have to enforce, like, aren't they supposed to have a slow-moving vehicle sign with all parts of?
Yeah, the ordinance says what they're supposed to have, so they get caught without it.
I've seen, uh, different municipalities that have the flag and the number.
Right.
You give them a license, and if it's like a K11, Casson, and so you can, you know who that person is. If you see the number, you know where it belongs and who, who you go talk to.
Yeah, the ordinance says.
Now you got no clue, because, but it's, it, you know, it's a little out of hand in one.
I did see somebody stopped on 57 today by police. So I think they just gave them a warning, let them go.
By, what was it, a golf cart or a?
Uh, UTV.
UTV?
Yeah, driving down 57.
You think they let them go, or you know you let them?
They didn't stop them very long. They were going opposite directions, and they stopped and then just kept going.
Yeah, see, and that's where it's...
Not necessarily opposed to, I mean, I think it's all right for people to tell them to use a golf cart and whatnot, but you got to be able to police it somehow.
Yeah, and, you know...
There's no fine or anything.
Yeah, and that's the problem is, it's, this, our parking lot would be just like any one of your driveways. It's the same exact thing. If they're driving around in your driveway, it's the same thing as our parking lot. It's a liability issue. If they came and drove up and down your driveway, how would you feel?
Well, yeah, what they do is they drive through the parking lot, and then they drive over the sidewalk, and then they go through Abel Science parking lot, because they want to go on to the northeast quadrant, and they can't go up 57, and they don't want to go all the way down and go around.
And we've done ample to try and deter them with fence poles, log chains, um, 2,000 pound cement blocks, um, and even the bike riders. They will come and they will ride around it, and then they just ride right through, they actually ride into the, I was standing there with the DOT guy, a guy's jogging into the construction zone. I said, hey, do you have a hard hat and a vest? If you don't, turn around and go back the other way. You're just jogging right into a danger zone. People just don't get it. I don't know if they need, I, I don't know how you equate stupidity, if you will, but...
That's not addressed in the ordinance.
Yeah, exactly, but that's one of the things of, kind of leans into the golf cart issue, but it's like, kind of respect other people's property, and if they're pulling people over and giving them warnings, they're not going to do anything. They give them ticket, ticket, third ticket, you know, and then rail them hard, you know? If, if you can't act responsibly, it's, I don't know, that's, that's all I got to say on it. I'd like to see something done about it, but...
I think it could be referred to the EMS committee for some review.
Yep, and look over to the policy, and then make sure that they talk about enforcing it.
Yeah, because, well, enough of us will be there to meet and talk about it, and the chief will be there, and, yeah. I don't know if, if he's here this month, but we definitely need to have the police chief involved in any conversation we have about it, for sure. Yeah, I think that'd be the right action, is to move it to the EMS committee, have them review the policy and, and see if there's changes that need to be made. So we can definitely get that on their agenda.
Try spike strips.
There you go. Trust me.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Scott. Um, old business, um, not going to say old business, but Mike Bubba, Bubba, he's here tonight for our 2023 bonding recommendation.
He's as old as he feels, I guess, right, Mike?
And what's that?
Said you're as old as you feel, right, Mike?
Uh, well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you again tonight. It's been a little while. So, um, I've been in communication with staff for, on and off for many, many months now in regards to your fire hall project, which was approved by the voters, and tonight I'm presenting recommendations, and in the packet, thank you, Ian, um, I'm just speaking, um, to, from my letter of recommendations, but it's all summarized on this page here, uh, which is a preliminary bond report. One of the recommendations we always have on a bond issue is how big is the bond? How much should we borrow? Well, in this case, it's really simple. The voters authorized up to seven million, so that's how much we'll go to market for. But in your case, something that's a little weird is, um, of that seven million dollar issue, how much can we actually use for project costs? So, you know, in a standard way of thinking, you'd have the seven million dollars, less your issuance cost, and whatever's left is what's available for the project. But what we find ourselves in today is a market in which investors are buying bonds, and they want to pay you a premium to slap a higher interest rate on the bonds. So while the underlying yield might be something lower, the coupon would be higher. So, Ian, can you zoom in at all? I just want to have you focus on these two columns right there.
And you do have this in your packet as well, if you want to look at it in reference in Dropbox.
So basically, you know, the underlying yield to an investor, for instance, on that first principal payment would be 3.2 percent, but they pay you cash for being able to slap a higher interest rate on the bonds. And so if you were to scroll up, Ian, thank you, you're doing a great job, um, you'll see the bond premium there of $131,000. So usually what I do with premium is I buy down the bonds. So instead of borrowing seven million, I would take that $131,000, and we'd borrow 6.8 something million, right? But my discussions with staff is maybe because of the sort of, you never know what kind of project costs you're going to run into, reserving the right instead to use that for project costs. So if you go up to the top, you see I've got 7.18 million in, available for project costs. Now, we don't have to do it this way, it was just my thinking, is that, um, by reserving the right, and I've mentioned to bond council that we would want them to build that into the sales resolution to give us that right, um, to use it for project costs, that would allow us to exceed that seven million.
If I can get you to go back down? Right there, right there, perfect. Oh, a little higher.
You'll also see construction fund earnings of about $200,000. Now, normally when I do recommendations like this, I don't really build in a lot of construction fund earnings. I'm always concerned that you have enough money, so I always be really conservative in how much money we project, because I don't want to get a bar too little. But in this case, we're talking about what's the resulting project cost. Well, $200,000, how did I come up with that? Uh, basically, um, staff has, uh, connected with, and wisely so, with the forum fund out in the League of Minnesota Cities to manage the bond proceeds, and what that will do is maximize your earnings, as well as they will be responsible for monitoring arbitrage issues. So that kind of takes all that stress off of, off the city. Um, and then just a quick chit chat with them, trying to estimate how much potential earnings you could have, that's where we came up with that $200,000. So between the $200,000 and the re-offering premium, less the issuance expenses, that's where we got that 7.18 million. So one of the questions I have tonight is, you know, is council, do you like that strategy? Or, or are you, would you rather have me use this money to buy down the bonds? It seems to me, again, just with the voters authorizing seven million, my thought is to take advantage of it.
I mean, it doesn't change our debt level, right? Because it's seven million regardless.
Well, it does make your payments higher, because obviously if I took $130,000 and I borrowed less than seven million, your payment would go down slightly.
Right, but if we kept, kept that extra cash, which we would essentially be getting paid to do it, right? They're paying us to make a bond.
They're paying you more than what the bonds are worth.
And then if we keep that in case of cost overruns or any sort of thing, when the project's done, we can always pay down.
If there's leftover money, you can move it into the debt service fund and reduce your tax levies.
Right.
Correct.
I do, I do have a question, though. Why would, why would somebody pay us a premium?
So...
Explain why an investor would do that?
Yeah, so we've been in this kind of a market for quite a while now, and basically is, imagine you have $10,000 and you decide to buy a government bond, and let's say the interest rate, it's a 10-year bond, so you don't get your principal for 10 years, you just get the interest in the meantime, and they're paying you 3%. About halfway through, five years along, you decide, you know what, I, I want my money back, so I'm going to sell my bond to somebody else, I'm going to sell it to Dan for $10,000. Except for five years later, the interest rate's not three, Dan could, could buy a $10,000 bond in that timeframe for 5% interest. Why would he pay you a full $10,000 for a 3% return, when he could go buy a brand-new one for $10,000 and get 5%? So investors today are paying a premium to slap a higher rate on their bond to kind of mitigate that, so that they don't get stuck holding a bond for that 3.2 million or 2%.
So, so you're basically saying they think that the rates are going to go up?
They're protecting against it.
Okay.
We've been in a, even after all these rate hikes, we still are really low rates. I, I remember, um, when I, back in the 90s, a 15-year GO bond was about 5% interest. Well, here we're looking at, this is a 30-year bond, and the net effective rate right now is four and a quarter is what I'm projecting. So while rates are higher, they're still incredibly low, and so investors are thinking, probably the only way it's going to go is the other way, you know? But who knows? I mean, heaven forbid another 9/11 or something like that happens, and there's just no way to project it, but that, that's the main reason I can give for that. So, um, let's look at the term. So the maximum duration that we can do on a bond is 30 years. Now, because of the way you collect, you know, your taxes are collected every six months, and the timing of all this, we're not going to have 30 levies, we're going to have 29 levies. So the duration of the bond can't exceed 30 years, and then we have to fit however many levies we can. So if you were to count up all those levies on the right, you'd see it's 29 of them. But notice that the first interest payment does not start until February 1st of 2026. And the reason being is, oh, right there, perfect.
When I design these things, I'm trying to get your annual payment. I'll never get it exact, because we never know exactly what rates are going to get finalized. And because we do these payments in denominations of $5,000, that's the industry standard, I can never get your payment to be exactly the same every year. So I'm trying to get it fairly close to about $5,000, give or take, per year. But notice that first payment, just the interest alone on the first payment is kind of already exceeding, so I had to, to try and keep this thing kind of flattish, I had to push the, the first principal back a year. That's the reason I, I had done that.
And so going back to the re-offering discussion, one of the things I was thinking about doing is, let's say everything worked out perfectly the way I have it on the wall, is instead of maybe keeping that $131,000 completely for project costs, maybe moving, if we look at the difference here, we're looking at about, what, 12,000 bucks, 15,000, 13,000 bucks? Of that $131,000, you could move that over to the debt service fund, just to reduce this first, first one, and then keep the remaining for the project costs. You don't have to decide that tonight, but it was just a thought that I had. How are we doing so far? I, I got more to present, but are we doing okay? Good, all right.
Over on the right-hand side and halfway up the page, um, a little higher, yep, right there, perfect. So you're going to see a call option feature.
You, as the issuer of the bonds, get to decide what the call option feature is, and what that is, is a promise not to prepay for a period of time. You could say these bonds could be callable at any time, day one, but I will tell you you'll get dinged badly on the interest rate. So the trick is to push it far enough out so that your interest rates are competitive, and yet still maintain some flexibility, and just about every single bond that's being sold right now is being sold with a 2031 call date. So to me, that's, that's the year to offer. After that time, you can prepay in whole or in part without penalty, okay? But if you disagree with that, we could do something else, but my concern is if you try to shorten that, you'll get dinged. I am recommending a standard and rate, uh, standard and poor's rating. Uh, currently, I believe the city has a rating of double A minus. Um, I don't anticipate that to change, but even if it did, the difference in rate, let's say you got dinged for some reason, the difference in interest rate on a double A minus and an A plus is five to 10 basis points. The biggest benefit you get is rated versus unrated. So in the issuance cost, we have $18,000 for the rating, but you're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest because it is rated versus not getting the rating. And just to kind of illustrate this point, on Monday, we sold double A plus Sherwood and double A Chatfield on the same day, and double A plus Sherwood had identical underlying yields to double A Chatfield. So while Chatfield had a, you know, they were one notch down, they had the exact underlying yield. So that's my point, is that if, if they moved us one notch one way or the other, even if they made us better, the difference would be very minimal. I'm also recommending a competitive sale. Um, I did talk with Tim about possibly negotiating the sale, because of the strategy of using re-offering to pay for project costs. I said, you know, if you have a specific number in mind, I could negotiate with an underwriter, setting what those coupons are to generate the premium, so if you wanted to hit a specific number, I could do that. But then you don't necessarily, you don't know if you're getting the best deal, right? I mean, you can know if you're, if it's fair, you can look at other sales, but, so, um, Tim Lively said, you know what, let's get the best deal, it's a competitive sale, and I absolutely agree. So, um, all right, why don't I mention, I think I hit all the highlights. Why don't I stop there, Mayor, and see if there's any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Ryan, anything?
No.
Well, in your packet, there should be a resolution authorizing, uh, setting the sale date for July 26th. Oh, let's talk about that date, July 26th. So between now and then, if you adopt that resolution, we're going to prepare the preliminary official statements, uh, staff will get to review that, um, that'll get shipped off to the bond council and to the rating agency. There'll be a management call, uh, in which Tim and Jessica and I, or any combination thereof, uh, will, will sit through that to obtain the rating. The, the Fed meets July 25th and 26th. And, you know, what I've heard is that after they had their pause, that we could be looking at a quarter point, but we would bid this thing out at like 10 or 11 in the morning, and they usually don't announce until like 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon. So, but if the market kind of senses that that quarter point's going to happen, they might start building that in days before regardless, so I don't know. But based on the Chatfield and the Sherwood sales, I mean, I'm 15, if you were to go through these underlying yields and compare it to those deals, I'm like 15 to 20 basis points higher than those, so maybe I've got a little fluff in this already, I don't know. Uh, we'll just have to see where we are in a month in time. Okay, so then with that, um, it's just the resolution, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Any questions, please, done? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the sale.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Um, I see on the next agenda item is special assessments. Should I stick for that?
Yeah, I think you would like to.
Should I just stay right here?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, next in the assessment policy review, Councilmember Johnson.
Okay. So we had talked about this a little bit, I think, during our work session, maybe a lot, I don't remember exactly. And I was hoping we could have a discussion again about moving forward with trying to phase out special assessments. Now, I believe our biggest issue with that is that, um, that takes away our ability to use bonds for future projects, because we need to be able to assess at least 30% according to Minnesota statutes.
20%, but yes, the principal's the same.
Is it only 20?
20.
Oh, okay. However, I think the benefit to spreading that out into a general levy and budgeting, um, yearly for street construction is, would be better for the residents, um, because it wouldn't be a surprise, they wouldn't have a surprise bill, and, you know, we all say it's not a surprise, because they could have came to the meetings, they could have seen the things in the paper and stuff like that, but, but still, it's, it's a tax from, you know, this year's property tax payment to the next year's tax payment is going to be significantly different once the levy goes into effect, whether or not they, they are paying it all upfront in one big lump, or if they choose to do the, what do we do, 15-year deferrals or 15-year payment plans?
Sometime, yep.
With, with a 1.5% premium attached, right? So, um, obviously, if, if we took all of our current projects in the scope and just started stacking on 20 or 30% of whatever that cost was going to be every year, that might be a pretty significant change to the levy, though without actual numbers, you know, it's unsure, right? But I think another advantage of it is, is that we'd be collecting, since we're budgeting for it, we're collecting this money in advance, which means that even though we might not be eligible for bonds, which I guess since we've currently special assessed 30%, we would still be good for down to 20. So if we phased it in, we could still use bonds for at least a few more years. But if we're collecting this money in advance, that means the amount of money we're taking out as a loan for the project is less, which should help offset the, the worst interest rate we're going to get going to, to market, right, for a, a loan through, you know, a bank or whatever other place we get a loan from. It also prevents us from having to do special assessment hearings, which is everybody's favorite, I know, right? Because there wouldn't be any special assessments. We won't have anybody in here complaining about how they pay their taxes, they shouldn't have to pay more.
At that meeting?
At that meeting, yeah.
Because they'd be coming to the, every other...
Preliminary assessment or preliminary budget.
But, no, fair point.
But, I mean, at that meeting, they might, might say, well, what's this going to cost me? And you're like, well, it's not going to cost you any more than it would otherwise, because it's already budgeted for. That's, that's a much nicer answer than being like, well, you're getting a new road, you know, so now you got to pay for it. So that's never sat well with me, you know, because, because everything else in the city is split evenly across the city. Uh, roads should too, in my opinion. Now, going back to our assessment policy, uh, 30% of street reconstruction and new and overlay is paid by the benefiting property owner. So one thing I was thinking of the other day is that we've got a few county roads in town, correct? Which means the street, or the city never pays anything to, um, new and overlay those roads, right? Those are done by the county.
Don't even change, yep.
So any residents that live on those streets would never pay for streets, because they'd never get special assessed.
I believe when the city did 8th Avenue, which is a county road, they did assess that, because there was some utility, um...
We assessed for utilities, but not for the street reconstruction, right?
Not potentially.
So...
There might have been an agreement with the county to have some cost recovered, because now our utilities are under their county, right, county roads, very similar.
It's more complex, is what you're saying. When we, when we have to deal with county roads and non-city streets, it's more complex to deal with the assessments, is basically what you're going to do.
I mean, we just dealt with it on 57, right? Same situation.
Right, with a lot bigger bill, though, than a normal city street. Right, so, um, it, it seems to me that this way, you know, everybody gets an advantage of streets. Some people live on cul-de-sac, so, yeah, if you're at the end of the cul-de-sac, you're the only one that really gets the benefit of that street, but you still got to drive through town, through all the other streets. You got to drive down, what is it, 3rd or 1st to get to Hy-Vee, like everybody else does, but when we redo that road, Hy-Vee's going to be taking the brunt of the cost for it, right? Not everybody who drives to Hy-Vee. So I, I think like the police and like the fire department, you know, not everybody actually uses the police or fire department, they're, they're insurance, they're there in case you need them. I think that if we can phase out special assessments and everybody can, you know, pay for all the streets in town, and then I think we'd be better off.
The other thing I just want to make clear, because you keep referencing street, we also assess for sewer, water...
Not according to our policy.
So we assess as a benefit, that's how that assessment computations, but when we contested the assessments on the 3rd, 4th, and 5th jobs... But when we contested the assessments on the Third, Fourth, and Fifth job, that was part of the discussion and part of our calculations to justify the amount they assessed. So it isn't necessarily just a street discussion. There's water, sewer, there's also water and sewer rates that could, if you're going down the road of not special assessing, you could say that the water and sewer rates are part of this conversation because they're going to be paying for the water and sewer fund.
I, I mean, I would, I would go as far as saying the water and sewer should pay for the water and sewer, which is generally what we consider for rates, right? Our operating expenses for water and sewer should be getting paid by rates. Repairing, replacing, maintaining, the water and sewer should be getting paid for by the water and sewer rates, not from special assessments. However.
And it does in our current configuration. It's just, again, offsetting a small portion of the total cost of the water and sewer.
Right.
So I think the discussion is tax levy plus water and sewer rates, plus a little bit assessed, brings up the project as a whole, right?
Right.
So if the assessment goes away with that, I think the tax levy's going up, plus the water and sewer rates are going up to pay for those utilities.
Right. How much, though, we did?
I think generally historically, we've assessed 15%. So let's just call it a 15% increase in.
For the rates, you're saying?
Yeah, in the sewer and water rates. Well, that's going to get blended into a waste or treatment plan on their own.
Be hard to determine, it would be project by project.
We'd have to figure it out. But there would be a, whatever, or let's say we spend a million dollars on reconstruction, streets, water, sewer, storm sewer. If we don't assess that 15% that we historically have, then we have that deficit of 15% of 1 million that regenerate through a levy increase and our sewer and water rate increase. But that's not going to directly correlate to that percentage of an increase, so.
Depending on the project.
Depending on the project, how much can we keep up? I mean, that's the discussion, right? So if we also don't have this revenue coming, that's called, of the special assessment that we're assessing, again, 15% historically, where does that come from? It's going to have to come from levy increase in our sewer and water, in storm.
Right. And this is why, I mean, you and I had a discussion about, about phasing it in, where maybe the first year we'll bring a special assessment from 30% to 25%. And we'll add a levy, we'll add to the general levy that extra 5%. So it just, we'll just phase it out. And then that should alleviate some of the large increases in the, the year-to-year costs on the taxpayers.
Still going to be a cost on the taxpayers, just going to be in your property tax instead of an assessment. It's still, because you're still paying the same money, no matter how you do it.
The assessment is a property tax, and.
But no matter how you do it, whether you pay it upfront in one assessment over 15 years, or you pay for the next 50 years that you live here, you're still paying the same money, if not more.
Well.
Still a tax is a tax.
Yeah, if you, if you pay it upfront in one lump sum, one, you have to have the money to do that. Most people probably don't, right?
We don't know that.
Which is why we have such a straightforward option in order to get it stretched out. Secondly, the people who can't pay it for, in the lump and take it over the 15 years, they're paying 1.5% more than the city's paying.
Unless they borrow it from their bank.
Unless they borrow it from their bank.
Which is something that you can do. This is just an extra option.
Right. So.
So you would be taxing every business in town. So now if you start taxing every business in town for streets, do businesses want to come here? We don't know. They might leave. Then you have less tax base. Now you tax the citizens more. It's, it's a snowball effect. No matter how you do it, it's still a tax.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we take off, get rid of any taxes, though.
The more you tax now, every year, is the more option that people don't want to live here, or don't want to have a business here.
Right, until, so, so basically, instead of, instead of taxing a small amount every year for everybody to pay for streets, we're going to tax, you know, 2%, 3% of the population every year, a massive chunk.
But we don't do a project every year.
Well, so, so every two years, okay? I mean, our, our current engineering plan, I assume, is a, is a project every other year, if not a small project every year to try and maintain the roads. That, that was our discussion in the work sessions, we want to put more money to that, which essentially means we're going to start doing a lot more special assessments, we're going to have a lot more angry people in here complaining that, you know, their normal property tax bill, and I've got to pay three times that much in a special assessment. Right? Where otherwise, you know, I don't have any numbers, but presumably, if all of these street projects were spread out over the populace, we'd be looking at, you know, a quarter million, half a million dollars to the total levy, which per person is, you know, probably no bigger than the fire hall project.
Can I ask a couple of questions, if that's okay?
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but are we already assessing 70% to everyone?
That's correct.
So everyone already out of the project is, is sharing 70% of the overall cost? Have we looked into some of our smaller projects? I wouldn't count 57, that's a, it's a whole different project. But some of our other projects we've done in the last couple of years, have we looked to say, I don't live on this street, I got assessed the 70%? You live on this street, you got assessed that extra amount because you're benefiting differently than I am? What that difference is between person A and person B?
You know, I think that the, the project we have this year might be one, if we, we could take a look at that. Because, I mean, we have a smaller project this year, the million dollar, you know, a little less than a million dollars, I think, for Second Street and for the other works we're doing, like on Fourth and stuff like that. Because that would be, that'd be one where we could find what the difference in cost would be.
We have a lot of people that complain about how high taxes are now. If we were to raise them to build that pool up, as we drop that percentage, like you said, over time gradually decrease the percent for assessments, that's going to continue to raise taxes.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't, really, because someone's going to complain no matter what. I, I, for example, I live on a newer part of town. My road probably won't be done by the time I'm, I'm out of there. Maybe it will, I don't know. But I have a hard time paying for someone who bought a home, it's 30 years old, now they're going to have to build a new road. I'm still paying 70% of that project, right? I'm paying that portion at 70%. But I may be driven by their house twice. Why am I now increasing the cost that's going to cost me to fix that road that that person lives on? Why should I have to pay more when they're going to be benefiting directly? And I'm not.
Well, I mean, all the city services are kind of like that, aren't they? I mean.
But we're paying the same for other city services.
Right. So people who live near this police station and the fire department are going to get faster response than people who live, you know, way out on the edge of town, right? It's, you're paying no different, right? People who live near the school, they can, they can walk to school. People that live on the south side of town, they've got to go all the way through town.
They can still walk.
They could, they could still walk, it would just take them a little longer. I mean, that's, that's kind of where all the city services are. Some, some people get more benefit from others, you know? Some, some people, you know, are, are older and they don't get any benefit from the playgrounds at the parks. But we're not going to say, you know, they shouldn't have to pay for the parks. You know, everybody, you know, we agree that the parks are the good for everybody. So people who don't use them still pitch in. And I don't feel that streets are that much different, whether or not we use the street or not, personally.
Can I enter just a little bit on that topic?
I just, I said something incorrect again.
No, not incorrect, I just want to continue on that perspective, because I kind of wrote down some of our, Melz and I talking points, and we were defending our previous assessment on the Third, Fourth, and Fifth project. And again, that project, we assessed about 15% of the total project cost. So I think it was about 15, or $50,000 per house is what the cost of the project cost the city. We assessed 15% of that, I think it was like just under $8,000. So one of our arguments that we had on why we special assess, because we have that benefit test, that we can only special assess that property, what they benefited in. So when we got together and talked about the benefits was, there's private sanitary sewer services that are privately owned and operated from the main to the house. Same thing with water, we provided a new subdrain service for their some pumps to discharge to. Sidewalk, which I understand is not, you know, calculated, but sidewalks are replaced and added in the neighborhood. And we can argue that till the cows come home, if people like them or not, that's a whole other discussion. We replaced driveway aprons, we increased firefoams in that neighborhood, we actually replaced a sanitary sewer. One of the first persons that we defended against had public works in their basement after their sewer backed up, and they were arguing that they didn't have any benefit from that new sanitary sewer that has a heck of a lot less likelihood that it backs up. So we argued that those were benefits to that individual property. Now, and I get the conversation of roads and who goes down the roads and we all share them, and water mains are interconnected, and in theory, the water flows throughout the city constantly, I get all that discussion. But there is some private benefit in a reconstruct situation, and we didn't really get into the aesthetics of the road and having nice curb and gutter and a nice street, and, you know, can you roller blade down the road? And those things, we didn't get into the nuances, but we think that there is a lot of private benefit that other people were paying, that 85, 70%, whatever the number is, that was a project cost, that there was a direct benefit of privately owned, operated utility services within the public right of way. So that was what we kind of hung our hat on and helped defend that number. I mean, and ultimately won, and that's kind of where, where our basis was. But the benefit test, now that is hard, and that's where the struggle of cities of assessing a large amount. We, there's been some contested cases that have gone the other way, where they said that your, the property has not benefited that much. That's where the, the state statute gets really kind of gray, in my opinion, it's tough to defend.
So what you're saying is if you didn't do special assessments there, you would have saved time in court?
Yeah, so that's a good point. There, there is a cost associated, I have to do an engineering part, there's more steps to the puzzle, yeah, attorney fees, engineering fees in court, absolutely.
So you could also, we could also not replace the private services, just do the mains, hook the old ones back up. And if they failed, then the homeowner's going to have to dig that out, dig the street up, pay 20,000 to 30, $40,000 to do that same thing at some point later. So by doing it as we go with the special assessment of the $7,000, $8,000, maybe it wasn't the idea. But just one of the, one of the benefits to the owner was whether you realize it at that moment or not, but say three years, we didn't do it, three years from now, your private out to the main fails, you have to dig all that stuff back up and redo it all, it's going to cost you a lot more than $7,000, $8,000.
Maybe that would have been better as an opt-in.
Right.
Or opt-out.
Some towns have done that, right? Some towns have not.
This is one of the points.
Yep, I understand.
The other one is, do we, I was going to, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we extend this to new construction? So if I'm a developer and I develop 10 acres and I'm putting streets in, everybody in the town could potentially be driving down those streets, should the city be paying for those streets?
I mean, if they're building new streets, I would say no.
What's the difference?
Well, they're building streets on their property.
But it benefits the whole city, according to you, of fixing a street is the same.
Not until they've built a house and sold it.
They've, they'll have them sold beforehand.
I mean, isn't the way that works is, they, they take a 40-acre chunk of field and they build roads in it, and then they plant it, and then those roads become city property?
We already bring that into the city before they put the roads on it.
The property's brought into the city.
I mean.
As soon as the road goes, we, right now, we for, we don't force, we recommend developers to put in their own infrastructure. But if you want to go back and not assess, then we'd, according to Chris, I agree, the city would have to pay for that.
I'm just asking. I just, I just think that's, that's a cost of development.
Not anymore.
That, once, once the development.
Would be a benefit to the taxpayer.
Once the development is done, and then the city takes over plowing and maintaining those streets, then we've hit the point where it's, it's available for the whole city.
If I was a developer.
Yeah, no, I was just asking a question. And then.
There's, there's obviously things to work out, I just.
Yeah, no, I.
Is this something that we want to at least get some numbers and look at what the numbers effect is going to be on the taxes?
And I, the two big things, one I talked to you about earlier was a concern. I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying I don't like the idea. Of course, I've sat through two special assessment hearings, and they are the most miserable dates of anyone's life. There's only two in seven years, so. But anyway, yeah, you're right, they're miserable. If we tax for something in the future, just to get this, I, you know what I'm going to say, is we have no statutory authority to say that those funds have to be used to offset special assessments. A future council could come in and see a pot of money and say, well, we know what that was earmarked for, but we want to do this instead, and it's gone now that it's going back. Now, we can't. And the other big thing is, I'd like to see the numbers, and Mike could probably, I'll give more light on this, but the difference in interest rate between the bond and what we could finance it for at the bank. And, I mean, looking at this issuance here, before the buy-up, or what do you want to call it, to the premium, we're looking at, you know, 4.1% is what it is on there. Commercial construction loans right now are 7.5% to 8.5%. So we're looking at.
That's going to be a little bit better for a city, though, right? Than a private.
I don't know that, and I don't know, that's why I say maybe you know, if people are just go straight out and borrow $7 million, we're not getting it for 4%.
Generally speaking, even with the premium on your rate, they're going to do better. And, and the reason you, you charge a premium is not to just be jerks. It, it's because you're trying to protect against cash flow problems. So, you know, we have tax delinquencies, or we have people that pay their assessments in full early. So, you know, when I build a cash flow, built with special assessment revenue, I make the assumption that nobody prepays, that we're going to collect all the assessments plus all their interest over the life of those bonds. Well, if everybody prepays, it's sitting in your account and it's not earning any interest. So you'd, you'd have a shortfall. So the idea is to charge a premium on the assessment rate to kind of cushion those blips in your revenue stream. But Mayor, I did make a couple of notes here based on this conversation. Could I, could I fire some stuff at you?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I, this is going to sound weird coming from a financial consultant. I couldn't care less about the numbers and the difference between using assessments versus not using assessments. I think if the idea of using special assessments is to protect financial impacts on the city as a whole, you would find it negligible. People wouldn't even feel it on their, on their tax statements. I am a fan of special assessments, I do advise you keep them in play, but I'm also a fan of strategies that can drive them down really low. And some of those strategies, you kind of touched on, but that is, the law says when you're borrowing money, you have to assess at least 20% of the project. But you get to define what the project is. So imagine we have this million-dollar road, you think 20%, we got to assess 200,000. Yeah, but half of that road is sewer and water. So 500,000 is a sewer and water project, 500,000 is our road project. So now it's 20% of 500,000. So now we're down to 100,000. And so you can, you can allocate your costs and play that game to get the, the, the numbers where you need them to be. But the real reason for the benefit of using special assessments, there's two. The long and fuzzy reason is, the example I always give is just one of fairness. So we have tax-exempt property on roadways that don't pay any taxes, you know, churches, post offices, schools and whatnot. And special assessments tags a little price to them so that they have to pay their fair share. Another fairness point is, and the example I always give, is imagine you have two identical homes on either side of town, exactly the same in every way, neighbors are the same, one guy's, and they're both for sale, both houses are up for sale, and one guy recently was lucky enough to have the city come through and put a new street in. Brand new, pristine, we were talking about with the nice-looking street. And this guy's got a crappy pothole street. This guy's gonna get to sell his house for five to ten thousand dollars more and walk away with that pure profit. And then this poor guy, he doesn't get to get that much money just because he was the unlucky one who didn't have the city come through in time that he sold his house. So the assessment, that's why they call it a benefit test, is to not let this guy get that undue benefit, if that makes sense. And then in terms of a practical matter, just in terms of issuing bonds, 'cause we can issue bonds, and I'll talk about cash projects in a minute, but you can issue bonds without special assessments. There are some different authorities. There's street reconstruction authority. The problem with that is, you know, you can't widen any streets. There's some limitations what you can pay for. There's a public hearing with a thirty day petition period where five percent of your voters could force the street bond to referendum. So that adds uncertainty. Every time you wanna do a road project with a street reconstruction bond with no assessments, you're opening yourselves up to that uncertainty, which can be problematic, 'cause roads are kind of essential, right? You can use tax abatement authority, which also has a public hearing, no petitions, but you're limited by law on how much of that you can do. Going back to street reconstruction bonds, those kinds of bonds count against your net debt limits. So if you're doing bond after bond after bond, eventually you could be pushing up against your net debt limit. So if we use, even if we use a strategy to make that twenty percent a smaller and smaller percentage of the overall project just by keeping that policy in place, if we can do an assessment bond, it doesn't count against net debt. There's no petition periods. The only thing that's up in the air is if your assessment is challenged, right, in court. And if you're careful in sizing your assessments, particularly now that you've got case experience, the whole community's gonna know that. You're talking about the cost of the city, the cost of the homeowner to argue that, yes, you know, they're gonna have to have an appraisal or something done. They have to come with some kind of proof that they've been wronged. And so, you know, if you can continue to keep your assessments at a reasonable level, now that that's already been tried, chances are being challenged again, it's gonna get smaller and smaller. Now finally, you talked about maybe a strategy of, you know, you said, okay, the twenty percent of the bond, so let's just, I think what you're saying is put money away and pay cash for roads. It's kinda what I was hearing. And that's a wonderful strategy, except in the long term, sometimes you don't get full bang for your buck. One simple reason is that construction costs have been going up higher than what maybe the interest rate you pay on a financing. And so over the long run, you get more done by financing the project, paying for more now rather than building cash. And the thing about road projects, I'm gonna wear my engineering hat, even though I never opened a one engineering book in my life. Road construction inflates faster than other kinds of things. So like the cost of a pencil, straight line inflation, right? It goes up, you know, five percent a year, that pencil's gonna go up. Well, you would think road costs would go up five percent a year, blacktop would go up five percent a year. But the problem is, it's not just that. It's 'cause every year you delay a road, the work changes. So what starts as a seal coat becomes a millon overlay, it becomes a full reconstruct. So not only are your unit items inflating, but the amount of work you have to do inflates. So the inflation on road work is more of a curve than a straight line. So maintaining your ability to issue, we call them improvement bonds or assessment bonds. So if you hear me say one or the other, I mean the same thing. So maintaining a policy, even if you developed a policy that was quite vague and flexible, that allowed you... So I sent a sample policy that I wrote together to Stewartville. I don't know if they're gonna adopt it or not, but they had the same discussion. They weren't talking about getting rid of them, but they were talking about how can we reduce the assessment amount? And basically, it said, you know, every time we have a road reconstruction, the council is the sole arbiter on determining how much of that is utilities and how much of that is road. And then that means you can, every project to project, you can define what that twenty percent is and what those ending dollars are. So that's why I'm a fan, more than anything else. It's not about, you know, financial impacts. It's about giving the council the tools that it needs to pay for these projects, and that's why I support it that way. And last thought, if a developer comes in, you're absolutely gonna set... First of all, I would prefer you didn't pay for new development. I'd say go finance it yourself. But if you do finance it, 'cause I think you guys do keep a fund to help pay for new developments, you assess.
We've run away from that.
Have you?
That's...
Yeah, boys and gals. But if you ever did, a hundred percent assessed, because otherwise the developers, I mean, we should just develop it ourselves. Why would we have a developer?
Never held that upon us.
Profit, right?
Yeah, no, not at all.
So it was just my two cents.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I didn't know that we had other bonding authority available other than the one that we primarily have been using with special assessments. But there's a couple of things I just wanted to kinda rebut. You mentioned the nice road versus the pothole road.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say that if the city built a park next to one house versus another, the same thing's gonna happen. But we don't special assess for putting in parks or park equipment.
Actually, the assessment law allows you to do so.
Certainly can.
We don't.
Because you generally aren't issuing bonds for the new parks.
You could also bring down the value of your property.
You might.
I mean, you can, honestly.
And then, you build a new school, the houses near the school are gonna, you know... They're gonna benefit from the property too. So I mean, there's things other than the road that we do that we don't special assess for. I think that also gives a benefit to somebody unfairly.
And I would argue that the best tactic for dealing with this would be to lobby the state to change the rule. That would be the best.
That would've been some push to that.
That would be ultimately the greatest thing to happen, I would think.
Yeah, yeah.
Get on that.
I tried to get rid of income limits on housing. That didn't help.
Yeah, okay.
Would you be able to forward that sample policy, give Stewartville that proprietary?
Yeah, you're probably not gonna, no, no.
Okay.
You're not gonna like it, because when I do policies, they're always vague, they're always short.
I like it.
It's all about flexibility for the...
Short is good, yeah.
No, if you wouldn't mind forwarding this, it'd be awesome just to...
Yeah, no problem.
We're gonna keep having this discussion to have different options.
I think the conclusion is the same, though. They're assessing about that fifteen percent, correct? I mean, that's the direction that Stewartville's headed.
Yeah, they're looking for ways to drive it down, and, you know...
They'll raise their costs on their rates.
What's that?
Because when they drive the cost of the assessments down, it has to be paid by a different part of the... So you're still gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
It's just a different way of putting it.
So what's the difference in the rates? I mean...
Well, for example, like if we're gonna assess less, then sewer and water are gonna have to pay more.
Oh, wait, I'll get to the rates. I gotcha.
You know, I was talking to Paul before, I mean, within budgets, there's flexibility on where we're charging this project cost to. To make it work within, you know, if we had to hit the twenty percent number, we would raise that allocation to that part to make sure we're qualifying it for that bond issuance. You know, so I mean, the money, as you all know, just doesn't just come from nowhere. It has to come from the ratepayers or from the taxpayers. And, you know, I'm certainly open to whatever suggestions, and I think it's a good conversation with the council they have.
Just one final thought. I just, I think the number one priority with this, reducing special assessments or eliminating them to me, is that it stabilizes the expense on the taxpayer, right? When we don't have special assessments, they're not gonna get an unexpected or significant increase. They're gonna have steady, expected increases across the board every year. Rather than, you know, obviously, when the county comes and reassesses and everybody's valuation goes through the roof, you know, that's not our fault, so we can't do much about that. But at least, you know, we'd be raising our levy two percent. Everybody goes up two percent, rather than, you know, the people who live on these two streets, you know, they got a thirty percent tax levy, because now they gotta pay for their assessment for...
And that's why your public hearings are so enjoyable, because of people realizing that they're gonna have an extra fifty bucks a month on their tax payment.
And I think, just like you did with our bond schedule, making our payments to be as close as they can to the same all the time, that, you know, it helps us into the future, know what we're gonna have to pay. And, you know, the taxpayers, for the same reason, they know that, you know, our property taxes are always gonna go up, 'cause that's the way it always is. But, you know, they've been going up small amounts every year rather than jumping.
So ultimately, to me, it's all about tools in the shed. So if you get rid of assessments entirely, it's just one less tool you have. So maybe a compromise approach is to address the policy that drives down the assessment as much as policy, followed by maybe conversing with the Southeast League of Cities, and I think I saw it at the last one, having them lobby to change the rules. Anything to give cities more flexibility to finance roads. It's funny, because sewer and water, you can issue as much debt without public hearing. We could, right now, we could issue five million dollars for sewer and water. We could just do it, right now. No public hearings, no nothing. And in Spring Valley, that's how we do things. We double negative things, like no nothing. But for some reason, with roads, we've got to, we gotta have these public hearings and use assessments. I don't understand it for the life of me, because I think a road is just about as vital as the sewer and water underneath. But for some reason, they've got that rule, and it's been there for, yeah, a long time.
And something there. One of the things, to your point, I think, Paul, one of your heartaches about the assessment is all of a sudden it's dropped on you, right? Like, you example on fifty-seven. You had an assessment coming and you didn't maybe know about it. And one of the things Tim has been kinda working with me, myself and staff on, is having a better capital improvement plan and having that available to say, you know, we're just looking at that table early before the meeting about when's the next project and when it's coming, to say, "All right, Southwest Cassin, this is coming. First and Second Avenue, this is coming," and put some dates on there and project out project cost, and then noting on there that special assessments will likely be utilized.
Yeah.
So that person could, you know, in theory, if they were citizens that was in tune with the city and their planning, could come and look at that plan and say, "Hey, I better buckle up. I got an assessment coming. I live in that neighborhood. The last assessment was eight, nine thousand," so they could see that the plans that were coming, you know, is a... You know, it's, I don't know how much it would ultimately get used, but I think at least we can say, "Hey, it was out here. We have a plan. We're sticking to the plan. We're working the plan." That's how kinda the cookie crumbles with, you know, assuming we keep assessments on the table. I think it'd be a, kind of a little bit of a, maybe a middle ground, so that information's available on our plans to assess, so we can work on. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
I'll forward you that policy.
Thanks for sticking around. Thank you very much. Travel safe on your way home.
Okay, number three, Cassin Park Survey. Ian.
So, these are just gonna be the results that I've collected from the park survey that I've been working on the past couple of months here. So we got two hundred and seventy-three responses over about a month-long period where the survey was open. There were eleven questions on the survey, and the survey was shared with utility bills and on Facebook and at various city meetings. So now I'll go into each of the questions one by one. First one was asking about what's your gender identity, and there we can see that it was about a sixty-five, sorry, yeah, sixty-five, thirty-five split between females and males. Next question is talking about whether or not you're a resident of the city of Cassin. A pretty overwhelming majority there were residents of Cassin. This question is asking about if you have children in your household, what ages are they? So you can see here that it was about a fifty-fifty split between households that do have children within their household and those that do not. And then within the households that do have children, you can see the breakdown of those age ranges there. And then this one is asking about how often you visit a park in Cassin. So the majority of people there said that they visit a park in Cassin at least once a month, and at least a third of those said that they visit once a week, if not daily. So pretty high usage with our parks, I would say. And then this question here, series of questions, rather, is talking about, it asks their level of agreement with a statement. So the first one is asking about whether or not you tend to go with someone else, or if you go alone. Next one is whether or not you're familiar with the parks in Cassin, what they offer. And then the next one is if there's a park near your house that has amenities that are accessible to your household. And then the last two are talking about if you feel safe at a park in Cassin. And then finally, if parks are an important part of your overall well-being. So pretty high responses of people who agree and strongly agree with each of these statements. And then this question here is asking about specific amenities and which are higher priorities for their household. And you can see here that the highest priorities were playgrounds, restrooms, seating options like picking tables, benches, shelters. And then it's also important to mention the wheelchair accessibility and inclusivity as an amenity for the park system. And then the very last question that I have here was asking about ideas for what people would like to see in the future of the parks. So there's quite a wide variety of options there that people talked about. When I presented this to the park board earlier this month, and Ryan, you can help me out here, we talked quite a while about all the different things that people have listed here. And it's important to mention that some of these things on the list are easier ads, like benches, or some things on the list are things that the city is already working on or has plans to work on, like adding more bike trails. And some of the things are more longer-term things to think about, like sports complexes and things like that. So that's the results from the survey, and I guess I'm looking forward to continue working with the park system, and I'm more than happy to work on some planning options with that as well. So if there's any questions about these results, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, what's the pump track?
I had to look that up myself, but...
Bike track.
It's like a bike track. Think of it like a, like a...
Oh, like an off-roading?
That tire track.
Yeah, fight tire.
Like a miniature BMX track, almost. But you're supposed to go through the course without pedaling really, and you just use your body's momentum to go around the course.
I had to Google that.
And we have a disc golf course?
Yeah, there's a disc golf course in Lyons Park.
Lyons Park, okay. I don't really get around to the other parks since I'm, you know, right next to veterans, so...
Yeah, Lyons Park is really shaping up to be a really nice park now. We've got the parking lot paved and everything, and took a ball court, so yeah, it's pretty nice.
All right.
Thanks, Ian. May I add one thing, Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
One of the things we did talk about, Byron, Olmsted County are talking about a rail connection between, basically, our sixteen street trail continuing that into Byron and potentially into Oxbow, and then ultimately into the Douglas Trail at some point. So that's something, Tim, I don't know if the Byron City Administrator's gonna reach out to you on that. So simply talked about, maybe not the highest priority trail, but something we're interested in, if there is some state funding available, and that being the Stagecoach Trail, which is a regional trail that the DNR has, that opens up some funding options. So that's gonna be, I think, a future discussion and council consideration, so just giving a heads up. And I did look at the comp plan, too, has some park and rec stuff in there, too, about trails and connectivity and whatnot, and improving some parks. There are some goals in there. That's pretty consistent with what Ian had, so that was all.
Perfect. Thanks, Brandon. All right, onto the parking study, which is also you.
Yeah, so you'll recall that I've spoken about this in the past, but now I have an actual scope of work to share with you tonight. So I've identified two different purposes for this study. One is to gather data on utilization of current parking resources in order to determine needs for future additional parking downtown. And the second there is to provide support for potential strategies necessary to improve safety, beautification, and parking resources of downtown. So to clarify on the parking utilization, what that is, is counting the number of spaces that are occupied at a certain time, and then you divide that by the total number of parking spaces that are available, and that gives you your percentage of utilization. So you can see here that I've included some of the industry standards for, you know, what does the percentage mean? So anything below seventy-four percent is considered utilized, or underutilized, rather. And then there's ranges above that where it's considered, you know, a varying level of at-capacity. So anything above ninety-three percent, they consider at-capacity. So this is the study area that I'm going to be focused on. It's about six blocks of downtown along Main Street, and then some of the off-street parking lots, and some of the off-street, well, not off-street, but side-street parking options as well. So I've broken them down here into different zones, which are color-coded, color-coded according to the different types. So red would be the primary parking spots on those first three blocks of Main Street. So those are the highest density of businesses, and those are the angled parking spots as well. And then blue is the secondary, so these are gonna be parallel parking spaces kind of on the side streets or the further out areas of that Main Street corridor there. And then yellow is the off-street parking lots. And then I've kinda described these already, but, yeah, you can see the different zones there that are color-coded. And so I'm planning to do this in a few different phases, phase, well, pre-study phase, rather. It's just going to be a few audit days, which would be sometime, once the Highway Fifty-seven project is completely finished. So the date I have on here is August eleventh. And so what I would do is just go out there and establish a base count of all the parking spaces. Kinda hard to tell sometimes based on the GIS maps, but, so I think it's just good to go out there and get an actual count on that. And then I'll do two different phases of study, one at the end of August, but before school starts. Three different days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, at three different times, eight to nine, twelve to one, and then five to six. Just there, those different times will show you a different utilization rates at different times of the day. And Phase Two would be towards the end of September, same days, same times, just to get that comparison there compared to when school's in and when school is not in. So with all that information there, I'll calculate the utilization rates, and then I'll break it down to, based on the different types of zones, just so you can get good data on, you know, where are people parking, what, when are people parking, you know, how many people are parking, that sort of thing. And I'll come up with a report and then present it to the EDA Planning Commission and Council at the October meeting. That's kinda my plan there. Is there any questions? I have to answer them.
Any questions, Fran? All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Be safe.
I will.
People are crazy down there.
All right, on to new business legion event permit requests.
Sure. Included in your package, you have this permit, and one of the reasons it's not in the consent agenda tonight is simply because of the volume. I know that the city clerk, who's currently out on leave, had some concerns for the utilization of this permit. Because typically, in the past, we've considered this permit for special events. And based on the utilization that the legion has, it's not, it's not really looking, it looks like it's more of a regular usage as opposed to a special permit. So she had asked that we discuss that just briefly. The issue is that on a regular basis, the legion will be going after the quiet hours. Basically, you know, we have a time limit typically in town, at ten o'clock, this, you know, the noise complaint will start. And so I think that was her concern, was just making sure that we're sending the right message. And so, uh, I think that was her concern, was just, um, making sure that we're sending the right message, whether we're willing to authorize this or not. It's, it's perfectly up to the council, but, um, how regulated that should be in terms of, you know, if it's going to be every weekend, that it's going to be until midnight or eleven o'clock. Obviously, we know the legion is in a, uh, it's next to a residential area, so we would expect to hear more complaints. So I think that was her concern. So that's why you have it on your, your, uh, agenda in a different area tonight.
Okay, it's the July seventh, August eighteenth, twenty-fifth, November first, sixteenth, and then October fifteenth.
The eighteenth is done at ten, so that would still be done before your-
Sure, yeah, and I'm, you know, that, that one is. And I know when I've talked with the folks at the legion, one thing I've kind of tried to guide them towards is, you know, starting their event a little earlier. You know, if they're looking at a three-hour event, you know, starting at seven and ending at ten, obviously, because then they don't need to have a permit for that. You know, as opposed to, to doing the, uh, to doing the, the special permits. So.
Couple of questions. Is that what the sirens were? To tell everybody it's time to be quiet?
Uh, I think it's directly-
Did it just use a loud at everybody's house?
The curfew, uh, curfew starts at ten o'clock.
At seventeen, you're supposed to be off the streets.
Right.
Supposed to be?
Well, more has it, but that was why that was originally ten o'clock.
Alright, I guess the second question is-
I need to tell the liquor store's closed.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, the liquor store closes at eleven, is it?
Nine, no.
They used to close at ten.
Okay, it used to close at ten. Well, I am getting old.
Uh, I guess my second question is, is, um... Ten o'clock to me seems a little early for what we want to be our downtown business district. I mean, it, we've got multiple bars down there, we've got a, uh, a theater hopefully. Uh, this is an area that I assume we want to, you know, be hip and happening and people visiting. And, you know, so events going on every weekend, that the legion to me seems like a good thing. Like, they should be doing something and, uh, I'm sorry for the people who live across the street, but you live in downtown. Like, it's going to be a little louder than if you lived out, you know, further away. In my opinion, I would almost say that, that our noise curfew should be different for the business district.
You'd have to change it then for the fairgrounds. And there's, that's a forty-acre parcel in the city.
Oh, are we, are we allowed to jurisdiction of the fairgrounds?
We have a noise warning that goes at ten P.M.
Oh, okay.
If you notice, unless-
I don't know if that applied to the fairgrounds since they're county property and not city. Okay.
So they've, they've been-
Surrounded by city limits.
They are surrounded by city limits, true. They are the county, but they still have been notified to shut down at ten, unless they have special-
Yeah.
It's the same effect.
Do they close at ten? The beer garden's open a lot larger than ten.
Well, that is, but if, like, the racetracks and all that, they make them shut down at ten o'clock.
I hope they shut it down at ten.
Well, they're supposed to shut it down at ten.
They're loud on the noise. I don't know if they'll go all night.
I mean, that's, that's not, that's not what the-
I mean, that's a whole other-
I, I just think that that might be a discussion we should have going forward. Um, I'm fine with this, I'm fine with this permit, but I think, you know, maybe we should consider some of those, especially in the summertime when, you know, we've got light, it's light out till nine-thirty right now. You know, and, and these businesses, you know, we, we want them to attract people to come here, right? I, I want to look at that and see if maybe we even want to make an adjustment.
That'd be a good thing for planning and zoning.
I suppose.
Huh, yeah, no, I mean, we could look at that, but I think as far as the permit goes, I have no problem with that. We want people downtown and none of this is AC/DC, it's acoustic music.
And if you look at it, it's only one in July, one in August, and two in September.
And at, yeah, two eleven.
I mean, they could come to us every month.
Yeah, no, and it's good they put them all together, put it in one. I have no problem with this. Plus, the fire department's not down there, but they already have the permit for that, so, um, I have no problem with it unless anybody has big objections, I mean.
One thing, there, there is other events mixed and mingled in there. There's festival, there's the big iron classic, there's a lot, we have a lot going on, which is a great thing, so. Asking this way is a, a nice way to put it, and I don't have any concerns.
Okay, anything else? We could have, uh, planning and zoning review the-
Sure, we could take a look at those sound notices, yep. Do we have to make a motion on this?
Uh, we'd be looking for a motion.
Yep, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Nando, I have a second.
I'll say.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, Councilmember Fair, she's not here, like the EV charging station she had brought up, she wanted to have some discussion about that.
Yeah, so we have this on the agenda, our new business, and we certainly can defer until she's another time. But just to let you know that, uh, she had asked us to take a look. And as part of an earlier application, earlier this year, we did submit for some, uh, potential money from the Department of Energy. Uh, we did, we didn't receive that grant, but, um, the question would be, you know, how hard do we want to pursue this? Do we want to, how much do we want to call, you know, pay, and where would be locations? So those are just things to keep in, in your own minds. Um, one location that has been talked about previously is putting one out by the, the liquor store. So I think the city engineer is looking at, at redesigning that lot. And so we need to have some clarification from council, whether we want to pursue that or not. Um, with the technology that we have, you know, we'd probably be looking at either, you know, probably a, a Class Two charger.
I'm not sure we want to put a charging station in the middle of downtown where we want cars going in and out, but-
Well, and I mean, that, that is, but the, the issue is that, you know, it takes a, it takes a while for someone's car to charge.
You're right.
So there has to be somewhere for them to park and do something. And that, therein lies the rub, kind of, which is why, why I brought to you is to say, hey-
Or they're going to set their car there to charge and then go, uh, how, how do they, how do they pay for the electricity?
Via swipe.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question we would have to answer. And, you know, I think, um, previously, I know when Nancy was, was here, she wasn't looking at charging. I think with the cost of electricity, we probably would. Um, one location I thought of that might actually work better would actually be like, for example, Veterans Park or Lyons Park. Because someone comes for a ballgame or they come for, they take their kids to the pool, and they might actually be there for three or four hours to actually allow it to have some kind of-
And there's plenty of parking.
And exactly, it might not. So to me, like, that might actually be a, a better location than putting it downtown. Um, but as I said, I mean, for her to speak to her own issue probably makes sense. And I'm just going to add on the agenda for you, just to know that it's something we'll probably have on our next agenda for old business.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Sean. On to the administrator's report, fire department call charges.
Sure, well, first I'll just run through my report real quick. Uh, mostly talking about the conference I attended, was very, uh, interesting to be in Seattle. Um, very different community than where we live here, and, and some positives and, and many negatives. So seeing, uh, the drug use there, it certainly leads me to believe that hopefully we'll be limited to a certain extent on, you know, what ends up happening in Minnesota. Hopefully, we stop at marijuana, because I think it, it would, uh, only get worse. But I won't do all that. You've got the report there, you can read through some different sessions. Uh, did have one really interesting one on rate, rates and how they are formulated for electricity and water and sewer. And so I think when we, uh, we do our rates next time, um, that may be something we'll take a look at. Um, next, I do have a couple other items. So we discussed this briefly at our last meeting. Uh, there was a question about, uh, uh, fire call, uh, business owner, home, uh, I guess, building owner in town here disputing that call. So I've included the data and, uh, the, uh, you know, the, all the information that I have on the, the call from the fire department. Um, based on what I've seen here, it seems that, you know, they responded appropriately. Um, therefore typically we would, we would maintain those charges. They would need to be paid by the property owner or the, the person that, you know, initiated the call. In this case, that tenant is no longer in the building. So, um, basically, I mean, as I mentioned in the last meeting, just wanted to give you a little more information. And if there's any other direction the council has for me on that, certainly we can, we can follow up.
Um, anybody got anything on that? I had, as, as a landlord, that's just the risk you take. If a tenant racks up a bill and it's your property and they leave, that's a risk you took as being a landlord.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say is, as having been a landlord too, is, um, if, if this is a building that's got a tenant in it, uh, maybe we can send a copy of this to the, to the landlord in addition to the tenant.
About the time of the-
So he know, yeah, because he obviously, I assume, didn't know he was, his tenant had a five hundred dollar, twenty-dollar charge against the property, so-
That's a good idea.
So they're gone and now he's, he's blindsided by it, as far as I understand. Um, which sucks, but I, I agree, like, that's, that's a risky take. But at least if he would have been known, he could have taken that out of the deposit before they left.
Sure. And owning your own property, you would think that you'd want to have batteries and up-to-date fire, CO2, all that ready to go. Because that's on you then.
Yeah, there's only so much you can do as a landlord. Usually you go in once a year, check all that stuff, and then if they unplug it, you can't go in every day and make sure stuff's still working, you know?
Yeah, one thing I did, when I spoke with the landlord, I did say that, you know, I was willing to defer these charges and place this, you know, person on the revenue recapture list for, for, for a year. Which is typically what we would do, you know, with, uh, unpaid utility bill of some nature. Um, he, he didn't seem very interested, but I mean, that would certainly be a way where I would, I would say, you know, if this tenant does have revenue, whether it's a tax return or something like that, that the state sees, then, you know, whatever part of that bill would be paid by her would not have to fall on the landlord. So, um, you know, I'll offer that option to the landlord again and say, you know, this is an option for him to defer it. You know, otherwise, you know, the feedback I'm getting from you is that we would move forward with those regular charges.
Yeah, so does the, does the fire department prepare all this invoice and send all this out, or does it come through the city hall?
Um, typically, the Amy over at the police department, who staffs for the fire department, would prepare these, these, uh, these documents.
And then she, she has access to the list of all the rent, registered rental properties in town? So she would know whether the person being charged was a renter or not?
That's correct.
Okay, so then there wouldn't be that big of a deal to send out two copies?
No, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, we ran into an issue, well, at least we did previously, with third-party notification for utility bill assessments. The state has some rules on that, but in case of a, a fire department invoice, I don't think that would be an issue. Uh, but, no, so that certainly is something, I mean, we can, I'll let her know that that's something we want to move, move forward on, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we did have another call, and this is one the mayor's familiar with, um, for, just as long as we're talking with fire department calls, I'll just reference it. We had a call over in Dodge Center area, rural Dodge Center, I guess. And you can probably, you speak better to it than I can, um, where there was two departments that were called.
Well.
Go ahead.
Maybe. So Paige went out for Casson to respond, because the dispatcher, this is what was relayed to me by the sheriff and then talking through the thing. The dispatch went out, paged Casson to this rural call. Turns out later, they realized it wasn't in our area, it was actually Dodge Center. So, but Casson was already there taking care of it, do that. Dodge Center showed up, according to the fire chief, unpaged, they just showed up, because they saw the fire, whatever, they heard it on the radio, whatever, it came out. Well, Casson sent their bill, and the person that got the bill is saying that it's mutual aid, so they can't charge for that. Well, our fire department's saying it wasn't mutual aid, because we were the first one paged out, they've got the pager recordings. So they're not happy about the bill, but then apparently somebody at the Dodge County office told them they shouldn't have to pay it, so they should fight it or whatever. So, um, it's going on there. The fire chief's pretty adamant that they're going to charge for it. Um, it's like twelve hundred dollars, and they sent multiple trucks on a very dry day for somebody who had a graduation party and a bonfire, and it got out of control and spread the whatever. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm with the fire chief. If they were first paged out, they weren't paged for mutual aid. The guys and gals responded to it, took the trucks, so they did, they got the normal bill.
They put out the fire?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they did the same job, yeah, they cleared the whole thing. It wasn't a mutual, they weren't called for mutual aid, they were first paged and second paged out. So, um, basically, and the sheriff, I talked to the sheriff yesterday, he said it's out of his wheelhouse. He told the citizen to contact the fire department directly where they are, and Joe's going to let them know that they should pay it. So if they want to continue with it, they can, but just so everybody knows what's going on. If, if they're first paged out, and our policy is that if we page out and do the service, they charge for it. So the problem is Dodge Center for the same thing, because it's culture, we're only charged five hundred dollars, but our bill's twelve hundred, so I don't think they should have to pay the twelve, well.
So since, I, I think Dodge Center's saying it's mutual aid, are they expecting, did they bill for five hundred dollars?
The citizens say, says it's mutual aid.
Fire department didn't say no, it's the citizens.
Somebody at the county, when they called the county, they asked about it. Said, hey, there should be mutual aid, you shouldn't have to pay for that. Well, that's not, those aren't the facts of the case.
So in the instance of an actual mutual aid, does the aiding department bill the one they're aiding, or how is it supposed to work?
Not sure exactly.
Well, with mutual aid typically, we don't bill.
Don't bill at all.
Yeah, so, you know, it's the same thing, you know, mutual aid is mutual aid. The idea is that we don't bill them, you know, when they help us and, you know, and it depends on what kind of situation it is, of course. There may be, you know, for example, with a grain elevator or something like that, and there's five departments that get called for that, that's going to be a little different. There's more experience and things like that versus a, a grass fire or a home fire in a rural area. But, yeah, for mutual aid typically, we wouldn't bill, um, but-
Okay, so this person, this person doesn't want to pay the higher Casson bill?
Correct.
But then again, Dodge County sent out people, so they want to get money too?
Uh, Dodge Center.
Oh, sorry, Dodge Center.
Dodge Center is also sending a bill for five hundred, so.
Well, that's interesting.
We'll let the fire departments and the citizen take care of that.
It almost seems like the fire departments need to kind of work this out, but...
Yep, we'll let them work that out.
Alrighty.
Anyway, just so you know that that's going on and, um, yeah, so if you get any calls or emails, just let the fire departments work that out.
Uh, late payment for utility bills.
Sure, and I'm just going to reference this, uh, so, because you may hear from residents, you know, we had some substantially high bills this last month for, especially for water usage. Um, a lot of people were, were wiring their gardens or wiring their grass, that sort of thing. Um, I know that, uh, Cassie's had a number of conversations with, um, different residents, um, and, you know, they've argued about, you know, why should I have to pay for this? You know, that may be something the council looks at in the future, if we get complaints, I don't know. I just wanted you to make aware of the fact that what our typical policy with late bills is that when someone pays their bill on time and they have a good credit history, typically we do consider that. We may end up even waiving a late fee, um, if they have that good payment history over a period of time. When they don't have a good payment history, we don't typically offer that to, uh, the payer. Um, that's a courtesy, it's not something we're required to do, it's just because, you know, we're trying, you know, our goal isn't to be drakoning about it. But, um, so I know, you know, Cassie had a couple of really hard calls, and I, I just wanted to let council know, you know, um, she's got a hard job and sometimes she deals with people that are very upset about things. And so, um, you know, sometimes I do get complaints about her, and I, I definitely always talk those through with her to make sure that she's aware of how, you know, how we always want to handle them. But, um, that is our policy, is that typically we do look at that. If, if there's a good credit history or good payment history, we do consider that as part of our bills, so.
Is this in reference to that email?
Um, there was an email from a particular resident, um, you know, and I don't know if, which email you're talking about, but-
Well, the mayor replied and said we'll talk about it, so.
Okay, so I mean, that may be the one. Um, and I actually already replied, you know, and I forwarded that, that response on to, to Chris there. So, um, you know, typically that, that's how we would handle it. You know, in a case like the situation where this, this gentleman emailed, he didn't have a, a, a credit, you know, payment history that would meet that criteria for leaving that late.
That's exactly what I thought, is like, you know, we should be letting them off the hook, you know, if this is a, really a one-time thing. But, I mean, even in his email, he said, oh, I know the bill comes in the first week of the month, and I decided not to do anything about it until I received it in the twenty-second.
There's just a lot of ways to, you know, he's obviously on email, he could get his bill emailed to him, it comes like clockwork, it's when she sends it out. So you get it electronically.
I would think by the second week, and you're like, I haven't received my bill, maybe I should call city hall.
Right.
Well, we do encourage people to, uh, sign up electronically, that's something we've talked about. And I know Jessica and I have talked about possibly incentivizing people with some kind of financial incentive, even kind of like some of the banks maybe have done in the past, when they, I know, for example, I have Home Federal, and they, they charge for paper bill. They say, hey, you know, I don't know if it's two fifty or five dollars a month, something like that. Well, as soon as I saw they were going to start charging for it, I went over there and told them, you can send it to me, I'll charge you, that's fine. And I think, you know, it does, it, it's an age breakdown to a large degree, generational difference, um, which is fine. But, you know, there's that stick approach where you're going to start charging them, there's also the carrot approach where you say, hey, you know, if you switch over to e-bill, we'll give you a one-time ten-dollar credit. And I think, you know, that's something that, you know, we may have a proposal for council just to look at that. Because I think right now, and Jessica, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think about a third of the bills go out and they're electronic. So we have, I think it's something like eight hundred e-bills and then sixteen hundred paper bills. Now, the nice thing about e-bills is also that we would save money on these bills.
Two-thirds are paper bills?
Yes, that's correct.
We can get e-bills?
You absolutely can. You absolutely can.
I mean, I've been paying mine electronically, but I still get it in the mail.
Oh, and you absolutely can get your, I get mine in the mail, because I like to get mail once in a while, it isn't negative, but-
It's a bill! Utility bills not negative.
I'm supporting my city, I'm paying my bill.
So, one thing on the e-bill, is you got to remind people, like, I get two, because I have two accounts. Not always do I get them both the same day. And there was a few times in the beginning where I would get one and not the other.
That's right.
And that is getting better, but sometimes you don't get, so if people do, just remind them not to get nervous, because sometimes they don't send them all out at the same time.
Well, I mean, part of it is the postal system too, and I'm not going to bag on postal system.
I'm talking e-bills.
Yeah, and, and the email, yeah, the emails, for whatever reason, they come out in batches.
Yes.
And so they do necessarily always come at the same time too, that's very true.
Not always do mine always come the same time. One time, one month I'll get both within a few minutes, and sometimes I'll get one one day and one the next day. So it's just, I don't know if it's the way it comes across.
Part of that is probably the, the age of the system as well, it is pretty, not-
I know it is batch.
But it is age, yeah. Um, so it should be a day late though, so I can call Black Mountain on that and just see if-
And it's not very often, but it will.
We'll change towns. Change with the new system.
Yeah, I think in new, our new software, we expect whatever system we select will be a big improvement, so.
Yeah.
And I think that Jessica's probably going to have some information for you guys at our, maybe our, one of our July meetings, maybe our first meeting in July. So, um, but anyway, so, you know, just a couple of things, like I said, you know, if they have a good payment history, we do try to be very flexible and authorize that. Um, we do, we are looking at possibly doing some incentives for people to do that electronic billing, because we will see a savings on our publishing costs then as well, we have to mail those. So it kind of is a savings for us, um, kind of a good, good thing for everybody. But, um, just wanted to let you know that, that's kind of where things stand with that, sort of in the utility billing department, so. But, um, just wanted to let you know that that's kind of where things stand with that, sort of in the utility billing department, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, engineers report, start with project updates.
Pretty short tonight, um, just project updates, uh, the big projects, fifty-seven, Sixteenth Street, still proceeding. Um, looking at it early August, and opening those two back up. Uh, we did coordinate with Mr. Schudie on Southwest, and Quick Trip on the Northwest. Contractor got some of their private utilities, uh, that they were looking at, some extensions in. Um, so I think it was a good thing that we worked with them, made delay us a week or so on, opening the roundabout, but it's better than closing fifty-seven and having a developer cut through the road again, so, um, that was completed. Um, Safe Route School, Sixteenth and Fifth, has been tore up, uh, they're going to be paving that soon, it's something that's pretty rough in there, so all of our contracts, staff, uh, talked to them about, uh, either getting it paved out, or getting some more rock in there to smooth that out. Um, so that should be wrapped up here shortly. Um, we have started the survey, uh, behind the liquor store in the Legion for those parking lot projects we talked about, which I think that leads into the EV charging station. If we're going to put something in the liquor store, let's put it in now, and we got it, uh, tore up, uh, while we're doing that. Um, and then we're also looking at, uh, maybe providing some stormwater improvements to Second and Third Avenue there, from the railroad tracks to Main Street, uh, in the railroad tracks, because I think there was one citizen called it once, when we were going to fix Lake Cassin, so, um, water sits in that area pretty heavily, uh, during rain events, doesn't drain real well. So, uh, looking at that as part of that project, see if we lump something into that project with the storm sewer system, so, things we're looking at. Um, and that's about it. Um, you know, we got the bonding wheel stuff coming, and Tim and I are starting to work on some of the financing stuff through MMB through the state, so we're going to get going on that, and then we had, uh, some internal discussions on some of the permitting for the flood control projects, so we're getting rolling on that on our end, so. That's what we're working on. Um, any questions on project updates? No, I think we'll talk about INI.
Before the INI? Um, any word on the contractor for the Millanobly project?
No, other than I...
Date on the dispatch and construction?
I don't have a schedule yet, but I did talk to him on another project, and he said their schedule's opening up after their DOT stuff has been opening up, so, um, I'll make that a priority to get ahold of them and get a schedule.
Okay.
So, I'll have a pre-construction meeting, so I can get a date, and then get it out to the property owners, and meet with them, and let them know we're coming, so.
Sure, okay.
Sounds good. All right, number two, INI discussion, Paul had some questions.
Yeah, so, we talked a little bit last time, um, because I noticed that the amount of water flowing through the wastewater treatment plant has gone up significantly. Um, I think the last report was we sent forty-two million gallons through the treatment plant, but we only pumped fourteen. Um, and the response was, we had a lot of rain and snow melt, which, that makes sense, in the sense that we have holes all over in our pipes, which I presume we do then, right? Because the sewer system, I thought, was supposed to be sealed, so we're infiltrating, what is that, thirty, or twenty million gallons of water in a month, when it's rainy, into the treatment plant, which we then have to pay to treat, even though it's just rainwater. So, I guess, um, we're kind of at the, I seen phase one of this INI plan, where we went through and, uh, had the, made sure all of our sump pumps and stuff were not going into the sewer, correct?
Yep.
Which, which should, um, that is not water pumped from the wells, but it's water that was going into the treatment plant, so that should have helped, though, um, the email, uh, what are you copying on Dave's response?
Yep.
Seems to indicate that we don't really have a good way to quantify whether or not that's helped at all, because of the variations in the seasons and the years are too much to actually see a difference, and maybe you disagree with that. But, um, I guess my question is, is then, what is the next phase, and how much are we going to be able to quantify an actual amount of reduction for the next phase in the INI program?
So, I think to answer your question, you know, we, so we have done the, I'll call it phase one of the private phase, we've done that. You know, we went in every house, um, got all the sump pumps, uh, disconnected them, or have people are on a schedule to disconnect them. There's some, let's just call a handful, that are still aligned, but, you know, trivial amount. Same thing with the foundation drains around the houses, and their private laterals. Um, so that's on the private side of things. On the public side, uh, we're very close to bringing the council, uh, phase one of our private, um, INI reduction program, because that's our sanitary sewer manholes, and our sanitary sewer mains that do leak water. Um, so we're going to kick that project off, uh, phase one, and then the phase twos planned for a couple of years. Majority of phase one is like manhole castings that leak along the creek that flooded in two thousand nineteen. Uh, if a street floods, um, it goes in the sanitary sewer manhole, kind of leaks in on our public side. So, um, we are attacking that, are going to be attacking that with physically putting those improvements in place throughout the city. So, staff worked on, worked on that, developed that plan, that was before the council, I wonder if we'd look at that this winter, was it? Um, and we presented that plan to say, "This is what we're recommending to get kind of, uh, deficiencies within the system, and these are the tools in the toolbox to fix it up," so that is, uh, going to be moving forward. Um, I think to the point of trying to quantify things, um, you know, we're never going to get all of our INI out of the sanitary sewer system, right? It's going to be sealed up, right? So, what we always do as engineers, uh, we look at like peaks, right? So, say we treat one million gallons a day during the wintertime, when, you know, the ground's frozen, nothing's running in there. Well, guess what, in the spring, when things melt, every sanitary sewer system has INI. The goal obviously is to knock that peak down, because to your point, you're absolutely right, we're treating ground in rainwater, surface water, that we don't need to treat. Costs money, we've got to build bigger treatment plants, we built a three-point-two-million-gallon, um, retention basin up, uh, at the treatment plant, because we didn't want to increase the size of the plant for the flows that happen once every ten years, let's say.
Right.
Um, so what I think the better thing to look at is projecting over traditionally what we've pumped, what rain events we had over multiple years, and see that seasonal influx, right? So, spring, it gets wet, summer, let's just say it goes down, like last fall, it was super dry, it was like historically flow, historically low flows. We couldn't believe how low it was, right, while it was super dry, right? So, spring, big snow melt, look at that, and then start comparing different years in snow melt, to try to quantify that. And then you can also look at the pumping records, too, but traditionally, the pumping records haven't been kind of the, uh, measure of INI, and what the peaking factors is, but that's something we can also graph out, just try to get some quantification. You know, what Dave sent was more of a qualification of, um, that you can't necessarily compare apples to apples, right? The flood of two thousand nineteen, we could look at other large rain events, and we can even track rain events, and how much, you know, rainfall we've had, and what sort of peaks that we saw.
Yeah, I was just...
See to try to quantify what that is, but it's just very difficult to compare groundwater saturations, because the second rain event in two thousand nineteen wasn't near as, um, a large rain event than the first one, but they were back-to-back a week apart, and the rivers were already flowed at two thousand nineteen, right, in July. Um, so, so, uh, looking at, looking at those flows is what I think, if you want to look at it from more of a perspective of how much reduction we've had, I think that that's kind of the exercise that Dave and I can work on to show...
Yeah, I mean, if we're not actually seeing a reduction, why are we doing it? You know, that's all I'm saying. And obviously, the sump, the sump pumps are really small little fruits, right? That's, that should be a very tiny portion, I would think, of the whole system. The manholes, sealing those up, that seems like, I mean, obviously, it's going to rain, it's going to go right down in them, if they're, they're open, so...
Yeah, actually, so when, the other thing we look at INI is what's the most cost-effective to treat it, right? And actually, sump pumps is very high on the list, um, for more bang for your buck on fixing that, and getting a reduction in INI, and obviously, building bigger treatment plants is the least bang for your buck, right? Because they're super expensive, and we don't want to treat those very high peaks, we want to get that groundwater, rainwater, we don't need to treat out of the system.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't seem that we've made any bang at all for the bucks that we've spent so far.
No, I think...
At least Dave wasn't able to, in a quick email, say, "Yeah, I can tell," right? So, maybe, maybe if you go back and look at the data, you'd be like, "Yeah, we've got a five percent reduction," and be like, "Great." Um, so, the manhole phase one, I guess you called it?
Yep.
Is that something that's happening this year, or it's something that we're planning for and doing next year?
Uh, this fall and next spring, so, over kind of fall and then spring, so.
So, then, so then coming next fall, we should hopefully be able to see some results?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I think we have, I mean, like you said, last, this fall was historically low, and to the point that they were getting a little worried about how the operation of the plant was going to, you know, operate with, with low flows, so.
Interesting to see June's number, May and June after.
Because of how dry it's been.
I bet, I bet we're back down to flows, I bet that peak that you were, you know, trending this spring, I bet we're right back down.
Yeah, well, I, I...
Dave, I don't know if he's got that in his...
I mean, I, I think it was, was it Tim, you're saying something about, uh, water loss, right? Where we pumped so much water, but we only bill for, you know, ninety percent of it, or whatever. Well, we're, we're running forty-eight-some million gallons through the treatment plant, and we're only billing for twelve or fourteen million gallons.
I would expect to see those numbers pretty close, I mean, I wouldn't say reversed, but, I mean, the pumping this month has been extreme. You know, we've had, I mean, for good or for bad, the water utility pumped a lot of water, and will do well this month, as long as we have water in the aquifer, uh, because we have gotten, I think, probably three-quarters of an inch of rain that's been registered at the plant. So, that's for the whole month, compared to four inches in the May period that, when they were measuring, so, yeah. I would expect to see those numbers kind of almost flip-flop a little bit.
That, that also is, if we're pumping all this water, and it's not actually going in the sewer, too, is not...
Yeah, you know, I understand, we can't, we can't just look at that and nothing else, because there's obviously, but, but the point is, is that, you know, we get a water loss of fifteen-plus percent, you know, we're looking around for leaks, right? Whereas, we got an infiltration of like two-hundred-and-fifty percent, for what we would expect, like... And then Dave said something about clay pipes allow, allow moisture to go through them, is that true?
Clay, uh...
So, you've got sewer, sewer pipes with sewage running through it, that just leaks into the ground?
It, it doesn't necessarily exfiltrate, we have more groundwater leaking in there, into the sanitary sewer.
Is that just because of the water pressure, what's in, but not out?
It's organic drain tile, right, farm field drain tile.
Okay, because he said that, and I was concerned, it was like, there's sewage going through that, we got some of that just seeping in the ground, but...
That generally doesn't exfiltrate.
I hope not, okay.
Yeah, it infiltrates, so.
All right.
Uh, but, while other towns, uh, use Medford example, work for Medford, they don't see near the peak we have, why? They're seeing on a big gravel pit, right? So, they don't have sump pumps, heck, they don't even have storm sewer, just infiltrates into the ground, and drains into the gravel pit, and into the aquifer, and they don't have to worry, worry like Cassin does in INI. Um, it's just the nature of...
We're built on a swamp.
Yeah, we're built on a swamp.
Apparently.
Pretty much Cassin.
Yeah, the groundwater does seem pretty high right here.
Northwest Cassin is, you know, super wet, um...
There's parts in northeast.
But I assume, I assume modern, uh, sanitary pipes don't allow infiltration?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so, so everything that we just did down fifty-seven, we shouldn't have any infiltration in there?
Yeah, I mean, like, again, in theory, um, no, but, I mean, there is a very trivial amount compared to your...
I like trivial, like less than ten percent?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's going to be trivial compared to...
I'm fine with trivial, I'm not, I'm not as much okay with forty million versus fourteen...
Well, one thing to keep in mind, too, with the water loss, is that number will improve next year, when we start metering at the fairgrounds. So, they're building their new building, and they use a ton of water in the fair that right now is not metered. It's just, well, it's the historic relationship between the county and the city, and how it was, what's set up. So, I mean, I expect, I mean, as I said, we've dropped the water loss number from thirty-two to fourteen and a half, or fifteen percent in three years. I expect, you know, we will be able to get into single digits, my goal is to get to single digits, because that's a good goal to have. Um, we're always going to have some, because it...
Should see if we can get single digits on the INI, too?
Well, I mean, I think that's a great goal for the engineer.
Well, this, I've never seen the community, I mean, it's just not going to happen, but, I mean, to that point, I mean, we do, let's just say, we defer to phase two of the wastewater treatment plant, to your point, um, we go to build that, we're going to have to go back and look at our historical flows, and say, PCA's going to tell us, "All right, well, you guys, you know, or maybe at one MGD, um, on an average day, but you guys peaked at seven MGD in two thousand nineteen," I don't know what the exact number was, like, we've been bypassing into the, into the creek directly. So, those are the things that, that's what the INI is to get, get rid of, is one, pumping into the creek, but two, having to go to seven MGD, as opposed, we can get that one, down to four in the super peak rain events, um, then we've got a lot less treatment plant to build, right? A lot less equalization.
It's the life of our treatment plant, which saves us cost.
Yep, because we pump that, and got to treat it, and chemicals, so, I mean, your treatment plant's super expensive. So, I think, to your point, um, reducing that is our goal, that's what we've done since two thousand nineteen, trying to get that down, starting to quantify, and be a good steward to the taxpayers' money, to say, "Are we doing enough, are we doing the right things?" Absolutely. I think that's what our report, you know, laid out, um, and providing that data, potentially is a little bit premature, but I think, to your point, maybe, you know, next fall, starting to look at those numbers, and see what, what that looks like.
If nothing else, we would have a graph, and then, as the months go on, we can hopefully see, or you could point out what the changes are, or something, you know?
Yeah, and again, I, as an engineer, I don't like to just gloss over the fact, it's really hard to quantify, and, you know, that's what Dave's email is on how you...
You're an engineer, it's your job to quantify.
Yeah, exactly. But, this INI stuff is just so complex, because we have spring melt.
Yeah.
Spring melt with the rain, we have two thousand nineteen, I can't remember if it was dry then, I mean, the second rain event was super wet.
It was wet before.
It was a wet, so, you know, the groundwater was, you know, the ground was saturated, if it rained five inches now, I don't know if we'd ever drop in the sewer the way how dry it is, you know?
Depends on fast it comes.
Yeah, depends on how fast, and that's other things, we have a super intense rainfalls, um, is what we experienced the last, you know, ten years, so... Um, but to that point, um, we, we have all the information, we just can present it a different way, and look and see how it graphs out, so.
Okay, well, I look forward to seeing that phase one get going, and, and, because the last thing I want to do is have to build a treatment plant, because we got to treat so much rainwater.
Or, you know, we talked about the trunk line, too, that goes from the treatment plant up Maston Creek, to kind of the, the railroad trussel there, you know? Um, do we need it now? No, it's probably got this much flow in it, and the pipe's this big. Well, two thousand nineteen, that pipe was overflowing, we were pumping into the creek, so, if we can...
So, we can extend having to replace that, or make it bigger, if we can show INI reduction, right?
Yep, yep. I think the other part of that, that we're going to have such a growth along that trunk line, that we need to replace it anyway at some point. So, I think we, we increase it now, you know, in the coming years, and then rely on INI reduction as facilitating more and more growth, because, um, the more and more we grow, we just put an apartment complex on that line, that ultimately flows there, we need to reduce the INI, and reduce the peaks, because the peaks are our problem, it's not the base flows, it's not today, it's when it rains in the spring groundwater, so, um, that's what we're, what we're doing, but to quantify that, we'll work on some numbers, Paul, and, uh, present those and look at the historic numbers, so.
Okay.
Good enough, thanks for that. Anything else, Paul?
Nope.
Okay. On to personnel, cleaning services.
So, you'll recall that Sandy's retiring at the end of this month, um, she, uh, has provided services for us several years, and one thing that the city clerk, uh, did was she went out and got some quotes, if we were to outsource the cleaning services to a, to actual cleaning company, so you can see those numbers in there. Basically, what she's found is that it's not as cost-effective for these folks' bids, in essence, as it would be to have an internal employee. Um, however, I did have a conversation with her, and discussed another option, which would be, uh, possibly reducing the intervals of cleaning services, which would allow us to maintain a similar budget to what we spent on our current employee, um, at least in the interim. But, I'm open to options there, in there, it's a possibility we also would go out for an employee as well. So, I mean, we're looking for some feedback from council, on what you'd rather do.
Question.
Sure.
Who, currently, we have an employee doing it, who supplied all the cleaning supplies? Was it the city?
That's right.
With the new company, would, that would be doing it, would they be supplying all the cleaning supplies?
No, they would not. No, we would be supplying the cleaning supplies as well.
Because that, that would be a big price.
Sure.
I'd also, I'd also ask, um, so twenty-four Ks for an employee, that, that's their salary?
Um, with benefits, and...
That includes the benefits, and the FICA taxes we pay on their behalf?
That's correct.
Okay. And we think we can find that on the market again?
Well, I mean, so you've got those quotes in there, so Mid-City Cleaning was six forty-eight per week, um, Abbey Ovi Nooks and Cranes Cleaning was six hundred per week, Simple Tidy forty-eight hundred a month, and Zero Germs Cleaning was twelve, uh, twenty-eight per two weeks.
Makes you surprised, though, doesn't it? They don't bring their own cleaning supplies.
Well, there's options, I'm sure.
I'm sure we could have them do that, they would be...
That's not this price family, wow, okay.
This is, this is basically just their time, labor, their, their labor, right? Um, so...
I'd say, my opinion would be, if you can post and see if you can find an employee, because when does she retain?
No, this is her last...
Oh, okay, so you need to get on the site right away, okay. But see if you can find somebody part-time to do that, and if you can't, then we have to figure something else out, but...
Okay.
I would say, do that, keep it internal, and, or, we have to rebid it at some point.
What's that?
She most of evenings?
Evening to weekends? Evening, sure, I mean, I think it depends, um, the library, she works some during the day, and the evenings as well, some on the weekends. She, uh, does city hall different times, usually on the weekends, but sometimes she'll come in on Friday, in the summertime, it's like she might come in on Friday afternoon, because we're closed at noon. Uh, Public Works is, isn't as public of a building, so I think she does some of that during the day.
She does that much in their evening, too.
It's a flexible schedule.
For her, it's been a good job, because it does give her flexibility to do it when she has time, and when she wants to do it, and stuff, so...
How many hours a week, you're saying twenty hours a week she's doing?
Mm-hmm.
So, would you, you were looking at reducing the services?
Well, so, one thing I thought of is if we wanted to break even, we said, "Okay, for example, the low quote there is six hundred a week, and we split that by, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars, if we were going to be looking at break even, we'd be doing, instead of having a weekly service, we'd be looking at three or four cleanings a month, and multiplying that out." So, I mean, instead of it being fifty-two cleanings, you'd be looking at between, you know, forty and forty-five cleanings. So, you'd still, you know, it's kind of like when you get garbage service, some cities do it every other week, some cities do it twice a month, and it isn't always the same, because you always have those, those months that have an extra week in the year. Um, so I think that, that could be an effective solution, if that's what we have to do. Um, so I think that, that could be an effective solution if that's what we have to do. Um, if, if, so hearing what the mayor says, well, we can sort of put an ad out, see if it's possible.
Well, it's just my opinion.
Yeah, certainly, it's possible if we can get it internal or if we can get a, an employee for that. I mean, I'm not opposed to that, I think it would be fine. I think that's where Linda was starting to trend towards. The other thing would be possibly, um, looking at, you know, kind of right sizing the cleaning service and saying, "Okay, you know, instead of getting it cleaned every Friday, we're gonna have it, you know, ev- you know, every ten days." So you'd have three cleanings a month or, you know, four cleanings a month and a longer month instead.
We could just add to the city administrator duties.
Well, I'm, I mean.
Doesn't say add to other, under project, project.
I have been in other cities and, for example, my previous position where I did clean the city hall when we didn't have an employee, and it's something that we could ask our employees to do more of that clean themselves. Um, you know, the library is, um, sixty-five percent of the cleaning itself is primarily vacuuming. I mean, they've got a huge square footage that gets utilized a lot more than this, this room for us, for example.
Sure.
Um, so, you know, in, in some cities, they do have some of their staff do some of those basics. And in the interim, as Linda notes in there, um, if we go out for a, you know, employee ad in the next, say, we get it in the paper next week and we get it on Facebook and stuff like that, we're not gonna have somebody starting probably for at least a month. I mean, you know, two weeks for an ad and then hopefully we'll have some interviews we do and then hire somebody. Um, so in the meantime, the staff's gonna have to do the best they can with it. So, um, you know, I know you were, you were joking, of course, but.
Well, it says other duties as assigned.
Hey, you know what? I have no.
Every employee.
If you wanna pay me to clean city hall, then.
I'm just kidding.
You know, uh, I would, I would, I don't know if that's the best use of, of funds, but I, I don't have a, I mean, I, I was in the Navy, I did a lot of things.
She cleaned the head.
I, I got the greenie weenie and scraped the floor off in the ship, so I don't care about taking the garbage out, I don't care about vacuuming, that's fine. Um, I don't know that all the employees would necessarily appreciate that, frankly.
Do you guys have any disability services in town?
Opportunity Services right down the street here.
Have you reached out to them?
You know, I haven't, this wasn't a project I was necessarily handling.
Yeah.
But it's something we certainly could check on.
I was just, that's what we utilize. Ours are a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I did, we did, when I was on Blue Earth, the library was cleaned by the, a similar type of thing. I don't know if it would be more cost effective because I think they are typically a little pretty expensive because they have four or five folks that kind of work on it, but it's something we certainly could check into over the next two weeks too. Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I like, I like all those ideas, like, you guys are currently getting cleaning once a week?
That's right.
And maybe it's not necessary to be that frequently. I guess, I just wanna nitpick on these numbers here on the current employee. Um, she's actually hourly, so I assume she puts in a time sheet?
That's correct.
Um, it's not always twenty hours per week?
Not necessarily.
Okay. So I was, I was just, knowing the numbers here, twenty hours per week at twenty seventy-five is twenty-one thousand dollars, it seems like three grand for benefits and FICA taxes seems a little low.
Well, they get partial vacation.
She does get para too, so we have to match her para. So that's a seven and a half percent match for her pension. She's a public employee.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the, the difference between what a salary at twenty seventy-five at twenty hours versus the twenty-four season here seems a little small, um, which implies to me that they're not actually working a full twenty hours every week.
You know, and I don't, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, Paul, so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
I understand. Um, so I, I guess then the next question would be is, do you, do you see it likely that we're gonna find somebody that's gonna work twenty-ish hours per week and this is gonna be like a thing they're gonna do for a long period of time or are we gonna be doing this again in a few months?
I would expect it to be no more than five years. I mean, I think that it's ideal for someone who is maybe semi-retired.
Yeah.
Because of the flexibility of the job and, you know, we see that in some communities where they, like, the city owns a golf course, like, they might get a retired person to go mow, and they do it in the summer and they go to Florida in the winter. Like that, ideally, we would have somebody who was probably in that, you know, I'm not saying it has to be that person, but that's what I've seen in the past. So, you know, I think, I don't know how long Sandy's been doing it, but it, I think it's five or six years.
Yeah.
It's not similar here where, you know, you might, you might find someone who's semi-retired who does it for three or four years and then retire.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against, I guess, going out for, cause I mean, it looks cheaper, um, getting somebody on payroll, just, um, I guess, make sure we consider that we don't wanna have to be turning over that person every year or something.
I mean, one thing to keep in, in mind too is, I mean.
I don't know if we're allowed to discriminate that way.
These are the quotes we have right now. Do, do we sign a one-year contract and then try again? You know, because what's gonna happen is somebody, one of these companies is gonna go, "Okay, well, this is the number right now, next year I'm going up five percent."
Right.
You know, and, and, no, no, not that our wages don't go up, that, that tracks as well, but those costs are gonna go up over time, so.
Is there any ability to maybe negotiate with them to say, you know, let's find a price that we like that they include all the cleaning supplies so we, we don't even have to deal with any of that anymore?
You know, that's certainly something we can check on.
Yeah. Cause I mean, I don't know what the cost of the cleaning supplies.
Well, they're gonna mark them up.
Probably.
Ten to fifteen percent.
Right. And then give us a price and then we can go back and say, "Well, how about we give you this and we'll contract for X amount of years"? I don't know if there's any room to negotiate there, because I do like the price of having an employee, I just, there is a little bit of a headache, we got one employee.
You know, I could follow up, you know, I, I would imagine, you know, that information is gonna be something we can find out. You know, I mean, there, there are two quotes that are relatively close that are lower, those are probably the ones I would have broached the topic with of, of including cleaning supply costs and then seeing what the number would come back to be. I'd have to, I mean, I'll have to figure out what the cleaning place, supply costs are for us, and I don't know what that number is and I have to.
I mean, cause I've used cleaning companies as, as landlord before and I've never heard of them saying, "Hey, you gotta supply the cleaning supplies", so that's, that kind of just surprising me.
The way it's our company.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I look at it, they're taking their hourly wage times the time twenty hours a week, that's what they're expecting to do and that's kind of where you get it.
Yeah.
So, but I could follow up with that, but at the same time, you know, we can also put out an ad and see if there's anyone who's interested locally.
Yep.
And we'll follow up and, and we'll check with the opportunity services too, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems like a good place to get, have somebody.
Give them an opportunity.
My only thing is at least see if there's somebody local that.
Sure.
Would like the job to do if it's for them, then our dollars are staying local, otherwise they're shipping off to somewhere else, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much for that feedback.
Thank you. Onto the attorney, fifteen Seventh Street Northwest.
She's not gonna say anything because Ian is gonna brief you on it, just like the memo we sent out today. It's onto the attorney because, you know.
It's the memo that you sent out.
Ian wants to put it out there, you know.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll, that, that memo that I sent out to you this afternoon, that's what it's in regard to, so. You'll recall that the property has significant issues that have been ongoing for months, if not years repeatedly. Um, several complaints by multiple neighbors, incidents regarding raccoons, um, yeah, just not a lot of response on the hand of the property owner, although some, but still not at the level that would be expected to avoid a, a code violation, I'd say. So, I've sent out two letters so far this year and both times the, the issue was worth full interest. At this point, it's been over two months of the first notice was sent, so I would really recommend that the council go forward with a, a public hearing to consider a visit of the property.
That's what we did last year or the year before?
Last year.
Was it last summer? Okay.
I had a question for the city attorney, so I'm so glad she's here tonight. Um, in a previous community, we actually went through and ordered, um, a building inspection as part of those abatement hearings. I mean, we kind of didn't abate just the exterior, cause I, I feel like we're, we're not getting at the root of the problem maybe. Um, and we actually would go and we'd have the building inspector go in with a city official or something like that, we had to get a court order to do it.
Yeah.
But then we would go in and then, um, the building inspector would say, you know, "These are the deficiencies I, I noted, you know, whether it's livable or not, basically", and it sounds like that may have been done at some time in, you know, the last eight to ten years, but it's, it seems like it might be, um, time to do that again as part of this process. So I don't know if you could speak to that at all in your experience?
Um, yeah, the, to, to actually get inside the buildings, and if you're talking about a home, um, to get inside it, you would need to get an administrative warrant to be able to do that. I think you would have the grounds to do that based on what, um, I've seen in the past and what I'm hearing. Ian, did I hear you say raccoon infestation?
Well, there was a, a sick raccoon at the property which, well, there was actually two different calls to the police department, the first time, on the same day. Um, so the first time the police went out there, I guess they couldn't find it, and then the second time around, they did find it and took care of it, so, yeah.
That's a good thing, right? We don't like raccoons?
Not sick ones.
Not the sick ones that are foaming at the mouth.
Usually if you see them in daylight, they're sick.
Not next to our park.
Yeah.
Or in your house, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, if you wanna get, if, you know, if, if the interest is in either doing any kind of abatement inside the house or potentially taking the property down if you, if it's so hazardous, um, yes, you, you can get an administrative warrant to get in it.
So what's the purpose of going inside?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, if you look at the house, the roof's caved in, the